Everybody start squeezing up and.
Yep.
Everybody's got their certificates up, right way out to.
Don't cover your faces.
Everybody look behind you and smile. Good job. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Derek, for coming out. Welcome to E-Way Mall. I'm excited for you and your new career path. Most important, get home safely. I know you would like to hang out with us, but I know they have a bedtime. Have a good holiday season. Thank you for coming out.
A bedtime is that way.
One AM. Well, that sounds like my kind of night. I know, I know what you're saying. Your eyes went up like, what?
You make this sound.
Have a good one. Okay, next we have the student representative's report.
Hello, good afternoon. I'd like to start off with construction going on in Anthony. The nurse's office will open tomorrow back up. The students haven't only been able to go to patent nurse. So it's very good that the nurse's office are gonna open again. So Friday, December 12th, we're gonna open. The gym, I believe, should be finished over the weekend, which is a good thing, especially for the sports. And the gym classes will be returning back there instead of being in F-100. The new lunch, uh, new lunchroom looks completed. I think it's opening the same day or next week on Monday. There was a smaller addition to the regular lunchroom that has already been opened. Winter sports will be, like, uh, already spread around the school because of the gym. Uh, sorry, sports like track and field have been outside. Cheer has been in G-100 and wrestling has been in patent cafeteria. Student government winter spirit week is coming up very quickly, December 17th to the 23rd. The first one is dress as your favorite artist, like musical and stuff like that. Twin Day is the second one, teacher and student swap day, which was very popular last year. A lot of people were involved in that one. Ugly sweater day and pajama day, just to close it all. The class of 2027 is doing a winter candygram sale from the 8th to the 18th, and a hot chocolate sale from the 15th to the 19th after school. The class of 2028 is hosting a fundraiser in hopes of raising $2,500 in return for dressing Mr. Paul D'Sano up as an elf. The GSA Gastral Alliance is hosting a clothing drive from the 8th to 22nd. They're looking for mainly, uh, mostly unstained clothes, functional, so like zippers and buttons working. SAD is hosting a holiday party December 8th at 2:00 PM. ICECA's Garbanite is tomorrow, uh, Friday the 12th from 6:00 to 9:00 in the patent cafeteria. National Honor Society hosted their blood drive on December 10th, which was fun. I think I almost passed out, but I don't really know. Door decorating competitions are around the corner. Freshman seminar classes, they'll compete against other classes in a cultural decorating competition. And teachers and any students can come together for their own competition for holiday, for the holiday decorating. PHS is restarting their Eisenhower mentorship program from last year. So juniors and seniors will be picked by the school to go spend time with kids to show them like a male positive, a positive male figure that they might not have in their houses and their lives through activities and games. And trips will be once a month for about an hour.
Thank you so much, Derek, for that updated information coming from the high school. I know all you students are excited about the new nurse's office and all the luxuries that are inside of there. I know you have work to do. I know you have commitments to your assignments, but thank you. You have a good holiday season. We truly appreciate you being your junior representative for PHS. And most importantly, tell mama say hi and enjoy your holiday break as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we're gonna have my president's report. Congratulations to Piscataway High School senior Sami Patel for attaining a perfect 800 score on her math proportion of her SATs. This is a testament to Mrs. Patel's talent, hard work, and to the support of her teachers, counselors, and administration at the PHS. I also want to congratulate the PHS counseling department for putting on another amazing What's Next career fair that serves non-college-bound students. This event showed a wide range of options to juniors and seniors who are looking into career options that do not require a four-year college degree. The success of What's Next alongside Mrs. Patel excellence on the SATs are perfect illustrations of how Piscataway High School is equipped to prepare all of our students to reach their goals after graduation. Whether you're looking at college or career, the educators at PHS can help you find your path. Since this is our final meeting of the year, and on the behalf of the board, I would like to wish the entire Piscataway community a happy and healthy holiday season and a prosperous new year. In addition to my part now as the president, tonight is our last meeting for our dear board member, Ms. Brenda Smith. Um, I'm not gonna sit and talk, I'm gonna stand and talk, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Smith to meet me at the podium. One philosophy is to give you your flowers while you can smell them and you can appreciate them. So tonight I present to you your flowers from the Piscataway School Board and Piscataway School District. I'm gonna sit this here, and I'm gonna talk for a minute. What can I say? It has been a six years of adventures, but most importantly, a fight for the students of Piscataway to push for diverse representation in the classroom, minority hiring, but most importantly, improvements to make sure that every student's needs are met, heard, and addressed. You have sat in your seat, and if you didn't say anything, because you didn't feel you had anything to add to the conversation, but rest assured, when you spoke, it had meaning, it had volume, but most importantly, it was in the best interest of the students of Piscataway, along with their families. Your commitment and what you did with policy, it will be missed because your expertise and policy made the difference and continue to make a difference that will continue to go along even after being your leaving. In addition to that, being who you are, staying true to who you are, that is a huge factor. We know people can change based upon trying to fit in or fit out. Most importantly, you never wavered. Your commitment with the search for the superintendent, the interim superintendent, and the hours that you put into it, the engagement, and the questions that you presented. I wasn't there, but I know who you are, and I know you didn't sit back and just let any old thing fly by. We have to thank you because now we're on the next path with new leadership and going to grounds unknown. But where we're going, most importantly, is thanks to the contribution you gave to us here at this school board, attending all these meetings, doing the trainings, but most importantly, always giving your input. Your input made the difference. Your input is recognized, and I want you to know it didn't go unnoticed. So I truly appreciate it, and I want to thank you for that. On the behalf of the school board and recognition of your years of service, personal dedication to the children of Piscataway Township Schools. Through compassion, commitment, and exceptional leadership, your contributions build character, enriched education for all Piscataway students. Ms. Brenda Smith, you were a member of the Board of Education from 2020 to 2025. We thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who contributed to this. My six years on the board have been very rewarding. Rewarding because I was able to assist the kids at Piscataway. And I look forward to onward and upward. I look forward to Mr. Glover bringing new things and new innovation to the township. I will be watching. I have grandchildren and very grandchildren in the system, and I will be here. If I'm needed, I will respond. And I, I served six years, and I'm very happy that I did best of everything to Piscataway, which is a wonderful district, of which I'm very proud to have had any contribution at all. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, also under my president's report, we're gonna have a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report. Mr. Gannon.
Well, Dave is coming to the podium here. Ordinarily, you would have the audit report already in front of you. But because of some peculiarities this year, a very late release of what's called the federal compliance supplement, the audit issuance was very rushed. We are one of a low percentage of districts that actually got the audit completed on time by the December 5th deadline because we were ready and we were just waiting for this supplement. But due to that, the report itself was not able to be bound and issued. I'll hand out some summary sheets. Dave will talk through a summary. Dave was at our finance committee meeting on Monday. As soon as the audit reports are ready, probably within a week or so, they'll be issued to you. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. And if it merits that we want to bring Dave back, he's certainly willing to do so. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's always tough coming in December because there's such tough acts to follow. Never mind talking about an audit report. But, you know, one thing I always like to mention is we did receive excellent cooperation from the district. Our ability to issue by December 5th is directly attributable to your staff. You know, our audit goes for weeks in time, and during that time, you know, everyone's gotta do their normal, you know, normal jobs and duties, but they also have to respond to all of our requests. And we always appreciate their cooperation and professionalism. We have issued, so our objective is, one of our objectives is to perform a financial statement audit, issuing an opinion on your financial statements. We have issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. And what that means is those statements follow all the generally accepted accounting principles that are required of you. In addition to that, the district also submits their annual report to the International ASBO, International Association of School Business Officials, to have it independently reviewed. I think there's less than 30 school districts in New Jersey that actually do this. So an independent individual who actually reviews the financial statements and provides us with assurance that everything is in accordance with all the requirements. So this is the eighth consecutive year that the districts obtained this award. So congratulations to the district for that. I'll tell you, I found that, you know, the underlying data and the financial reports of the district are in excellent condition. So, you know, when you receive those monthly reports, you should feel very comfortable that they're accurate and that you can rely on them to make important decisions for the district. Overall, the district's in sound financial position. At the end of the year, the general fund had $64.8 million of fund balance.
Was this like a decrease from the prior year, 2.49?
It's important to remember, out of that, out of that amount, 26 million is restricted for capital reserve. And as you all know, you have no bonded debt, which is very unusual for a district this size. And from, you know, part of that reason is that you've set aside money each year to put towards capital improvements. So you've saved on interest expense and then all those other types of costs that go along with issuing debt. So, you know, I think this is like the third or fourth straight year they've had no bonded debt. Again, an extraordinary accomplishment. You also have a maintenance reserve of $6.5 million, an emergency reserve of $1 million, $10.8 million of encumbrances. So what that is, is that out of the budget last year, you awarded contracts, started projects, mostly from a construction perspective. And those projects just weren't completed by end of June 30th. So what happens, that rolls into your next budget, and then you expend those funds during this fiscal year. Out of that, 10.8, 9.3 was actually laid to construction and capital outweigh. $8.7 million is designated and being utilized actually in the year that you're in, the 25, 26 budget, that was utilized to support it, to keep taxes lower. At the end of this year, $6.6 million is excess surplus. And what that means is that you'll have that for your 26, 27 budget to start off, you know, funding the budget with those funds. And a $1.9 million unemployment trust reserve, and the remaining balance is unrestricted. Special revenue fund had about $900,000 of earned revenue for preschool education. Preschool education aid account of about $8.8 million. So that money will, again, be utilized in this year's budget. Capital projects fund balance was actually zero. You had an ESIP lease for a number of years that was being completed. $1.6 million was expended out of this past year. That project's now complete. Well, any interest that was earned was transferred over to the general fund. It actually has some leftover funds that you're able to apply towards principal for the next year. Food service funds net position was $1.2 million. Only $260,000 of that was actually unrestricted. The rest was invested in capital assets. So over the last couple of years, the district has spent a considerable amount of money investing in the food service account and the food service fund, purchasing new equipment and modernizing that. And one of the reasons why you had to do that is that the state looks very closely at how much funds you have in the food service account. And there's a certain threshold where they say, you know, you have too much. And you're required to then invest those funds directly into the food service fund, which you did. Adult school and community education program, you know, it's a very wildly successful program for many years in the district. Your fund balance was $3.3 million, mostly unrestricted. As I mentioned, your bonded debt is zero, which is an extraordinary feat. In addition to, during our financial audit, we're also required to do what's called a federal and state single audit. And what that requires is that, you know, you have a certain number of grants that you receive, both from the federal perspective and the state perspective. And we have to pick some of those and actually audit them and give you an opinion as to whether you comply with those requirements. We've issued an unmodified opinion on compliance with the five programs that we were required to test. And then, you know, during the audit, we do several different types of tests, internal controls, compliance with a lot of different state statutes that you're required to follow. We found that we didn't find any exceptions. So there's no corrective action plan that you have to file this year, which again is a testament to, you know, the diligence of your staff and the administration. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
So you mentioned that there's the amount of, what was the amount that's going towards 26, 27 year? And where is that on this barrage of numbers that I'm trying to follow somehow?
It's $6.6 million.
And, and it's.
So is you, in the first column on the general, on the general fund, on B1?
Uh-huh.
If you go down the page a bit.
Yeah.
It's.
I see, this one.
$6.6 million.
Got it. Yeah, got it, okay. And that, so that is the unrestricted?
No, that is the amount that you're required to utilize in your 26, 27 budget.
We have to use it.
You have to use it. It's required by law. So your actual unrestricted fund balance is roughly $3 million.
Unrestricted fund balance is the, the state caps how much we're allowed to keep basically in the piggy bank on the side.
Right.
And they have a cap, and we're at the cap. And that's the maximum reserve we're allowed to have.
Okay.
All the other stuff is specifically designated for certain activities or funds or reserves, et cetera.
Are you saying the food service?
Our capital service, excuse me, our capital reserve fund, maintenance reserve fund. So we have specifically allocated everything else. Our emergency piggy bank that is unrestricted for anything that might come up is 3 million.
Right.
An interesting thing for everyone to note is, is that school districts are capped at 2%. Dave, you do a lot of municipalities and counties, and what's their limit?
There is no cap.
There's no cap?
No cap.
So townships, counties, they could have 15% of their budget, you know, in their piggy bank for emergencies or what have you. But school districts have a 2% cap. And we're at it, and I'm very comfortable and happy with it. All these other reserves and restricted uses of the funds are designated for certain purposes. As the board's aware of all the capital projects we've done, that's one bucket. And we have a bucket for maintenance, you know, that we can use over the coming years. So there's different buckets like that that we have the rest of the funds in.
Okay.
No, I, I, thank you, David Gannon, for your look into the district and with the audit. And thank you to the business office and all the work that you do. And, you know, nine years in a row, I believe it is, that International ASBO, that's, that's quite a feat and great work.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, you guys.
Thank you.
Next, superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Peace and blessings. Good to see you. Happy to be here, sitting, serving in the capacity as superintendent in my first board meeting and excited to be here. As required, there are a few things that I have to do before I get into my report, but I wanted to just make this announcement publicly and say to the community of Piscataway, the Board of Education here has entrusted me to lead our district, and I have all intentions of leading the district very well. There's a great team of folks who I work with, and thus far in my three and a half weeks of being here, I'm excited about the direction we're gonna go. Trust me, it's gonna be light speed in some spaces, but we're gonna be very transparent in how we communicate. We're gonna be very focused on how we support each other, and we are going to put our students at the center of all of our work. Our students are number one, the number one priority and the reason that we get up and do this. These are board members who are unpaid. So the time, the hours that they dedicate to this shows me that I have to match that as a paid official of this district. So I want to first begin by just saying, thank you. I'm happy to be here. When I say, let's get it, let's go, that means let's go. We don't have any time to slow down because our students deserve it. Tonight, as required, I need to do a report that actually outlines our annual, semi-annual violence and vandalism report. I'm doing that in the place of Dr. Lotman, who is out this evening. So I'm gonna highlight some of the key components. I'm not gonna just read everything word for word. This will be always available if it needs to be for the public. But this is what we are required to report out on our student safety data system, SSDS. These are incidents as described between January 2025 and June of 2025. Let me say that again. This report describes incidents that occurred from January 2025 through June of 2025. In the state of New Jersey, all districts are required to conduct a semi-annual public hearing that provides a summary of the incidents reported to the Department of Education. Incidents must be reported, fall, incidents that must be reported fall into the categories of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. This is based on the Department of Education and statutory guidelines. To give you some comparison data, between the months of January through June of 2024, in the following categories, violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and HIV confirmed, these were the data points and metrics that resulted. Again, this is from January through June of 2024. Number of violence incidents that were recorded, 26. Vandalism, 5. Substance abuse, 31. Weapons, 1. Confirmed HIV cases, 13. This resulted in a total of 76 incidents that were reported between the period of January through June of 2024. A year later, between the period of January through June 2025, happy to report that we saw a decline in the reported incidents across these same categories. Violence, 20. Vandalism, 4. Substance abuse, 29. Weapons, 3. Confirmed HIV cases, 11. For a total of 67. While it might not seem like a significant number, the reduction in the number of incidents reported does speak to the culture and climate beginning to improve and addressing the needs of our students. The Piscataway School just reports that these incidents have been addressed through our counselors, substance abuse counselors, administrators, and our partnership with the Haven, which is out of Rutgers University. This continued support allows for our students to receive support and conduct, participate in activities around social and emotional learning, counseling lessons, and drug prevention programs. These are all worthwhile activities that continue to support positive behavior and help to, help our students understand why violence, vandalism, substance abuse, the use of weapons, and engaging in harassment, intimidation, and bullying are not accepted here, but also we can support you in how to redirect those behaviors. While we do not like to give out discipline to any student in a negative way that can have an impact on their long-term future, consequences are part of the reality. But with those consequences, it also comes bringing students back into the space in a healthy way. And here, we're gonna continue to make sure that the students just don't feel the brunt of those consequences. They understand what it means to re-enter back into those learning environments where they may have been disruptive or had some issues that may bring harm to themselves or to others. It is our expectation that we will continue to work with our partners, such as the Piscataway Police Department, our Township Community Outreach Advisory Board, as well as our other mentoring groups to make sure our students understand how to make the necessary outreach when they see a need for their own development around the issues of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and how they communicate with their peer group. The data that has been reported outlines the cases at each one of our schools. The data that has been reported outlines the cases at each one of our schools as well as if they were confirmed or reported. Again, I do not want to read through each one, but I will state that many times we're concerned about what's happened at our high school, and I'm happy to say that our high school numbers, again, are decreasing, which again speaks to the culture and climate of our high school. The total number of incidents that took place at our high school this year, I mean, excuse me, during the period of twenty January through June of two thousand twenty-five, forty-eight at the high school. Kanakamak had zero total incidents. Quibbletown, five. Theodore Shore Middle School, two. Arbor, twelve. And the remaining schools, Dwight Eisenhower, Grandview, Knollwood, Martin Luther King Elementary, Randolphville Elementary, and of course, the early childhood centers, all had zero. Again, while that may seem like they are a significant number at one school, we understand when you have two thousand, over two thousand students walking in our high schools, to have forty-eight confirmed incidents speaks to the support of our staff and the leadership of the administrators. Board members, Madam President and Vice President, that concludes the semi-annual violence and vandalism report that is required to be submitted for the period of January through June of two thousand twenty-five. Yes?
I just wanna make a note, I, when we had this same report, uh, six months ago, I believe it was, um, there was a significant number of incidents at, in the middle school level, and I had noticed that there's improvement in Theodore Shore's numbers, but there still continues to be a very large number at Arbor Elementary School. And, um, so I do wanna just raise that flag again about what, like, what is happening at that elementary school that we have, you know, twelve incidences for a four or five school where the other four or five school has zero? So, um, I just, I think it seems like a huge disparity by comparison. So I, I just feel like we need to, 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 um, look into this a little deeper, um, in terms of where, where the disconnect is. For Arbor School, you also have five confirmed, um, HIBs, whereas MLK, again, is zero. You know, I feel like there needs to be some more, um, efforts perhaps, um, put into play or some more, you know, investigation as to what we could do to help the students at Arbor to, uh, not in, in, have incidences of violence and so on. So, I mean, I don't know how that goes, you know? I'm a board member, I just feel like there's a disparity, and I just wanna comment against that. I do wanna recognize that there's an improvement with Shore, and I wanna point that out because the, there was a huge number there for Shore Middle School prior, in prior reports. So I do wanna commend whatever is happening over at Shore. Maybe they can also, you know, team up or help out, um, whatever, you know, over at Arbor, I don't know how that goes, but, um, just wanted to bring that to light. So, yeah. And then another note, um, on the weapons, actually was the only thing that went up. I mean, it's, it, it's two, you know, more than it was before, but, I mean, any weapons is not good, so, I don't know. Not really much you can really do about that. Children, children, so, anyways.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else with questions, concerns?
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President. So this part of my report is what I call the fun part because it's a chance to brag on the work that we're doing internally. For those that had a chance to see our students this evening, that's what this is about. Our students being able to feel confident, showcasing their talents, and being ready for the, as I say, that post-secondary space. That's what it's about. Although they're third graders, that time is gonna fly by and they're gonna be graduating soon, what does it look like? We don't know if standing for us tonight were the next great actors and actresses who may be on Broadway, and we're actually paying money to go see them perform. Speaking of seeing perform, I wanna give recognition, accolades, shout-out, and all those positive words. Congratulations to our Piscataway High School theater students who attended the Paper Mill Playhouse yesterday, and when I say showed out, they showed out. If you haven't seen the pictures on Parent Square or on our website, please go and visit. We already know that Piscataway has great talent, and we already know that they get a chance to showcase that talent on a regular basis. But when they get a chance to go and to perform as if they were on Broadway, we need to stand up and give accolades to that.
Yeah.
So please go to our website, go to Parent Square. Everything I do is kind of a teachable moment, so watch how I connect the dots on this one. Go to Parent Square, see the images of our students, and make sure if you know them, call them, say, why didn't you give me a free ticket? I would've come, taken time away from work. But let's give accolades to those students for continuing to put us on the, on the map around their great talents. We saw a free show this evening. They went to the Paper Mill Playhouse and showed out. They've been, throughout the district during this holiday season, our students have been performing with us in the gift of song and dance. Let's continue to make sure we inspire them with the energy and love that they need in order to be great performers. Accolades to our supervisor, the teachers, and all of those who supported that activity. Parent Square, I teed it up a little bit. We've been utilizing Parents, Parent Square, from my understanding, since March of April of two thousand twenty-five. Remember I said we're gonna come in, we're gonna ramp some things up? So there are components of Parent Square that we haven't released yet, but now it's time. So in the new year, look for new communication and training to go with it to support you on that next level of Parent Square and how we communicate. Transparency, but we also wanna make sure it's safe communication, that you can feel comfortable it's coming from us. We also wanna be very mindful that we're not sending communication that is just flooding your text message, your emails, and things of that nature. For those of us that have children across multiple schools, you begin to say, I don't know if it's coming from Eisenhower, the high school, Grandview, Shore. We wanna make sure we're intelligent about how we communicate with you, but we wanna communicate. Again, we want you to know when things are happening in the district. So Parent Square, communication mid to late January is gonna come out about our next phase of how we communicate with the parents, with the community, and with teachers beginning to be able to showcase their talent. We're gonna roll it out intelligently, we're gonna make sure we professionally develop our teachers to make sure they're comfortable with it, and our leader's gonna help support that. I don't wanna give the exact date, but I'm looking early spring to have this ramped up and fully being used across the whole district. This communication we pay for, so we wanna make sure we maximize what we pay for. If we use it, we're gonna maximize every ounce of whatever we pay for. So that's our Parent Square, making sure that we communicate to you in a timely manner. Communication, I've been blessed to inherit a great communications individual. If you have not seen our superintendent report, I would just like to continue to give accolades to Mr. Gary Miller, who's sitting here this evening. Gary, thank you for the work that you're doing. Our superintendent report is available to you via Parent Square website, but I just wanna continue to recognize a few of the highlights of our Parent Square. As mentioned earlier by our president, our student who received a perfect score on the math SAT. I'm jealous, I remember when I took it, my, and I'm a math person, my score was not at eight hundred, so that's very, very good, and she deserves that. I'm sure there's gonna be many colleges and scholarship offers coming her way. We talk about those students who may not have aspirations to go right into the college space. The career fair, I went and got a chance to talk to some of our partners who were here to offer job opportunities for our students. Great event. We're gonna continue to make sure we give our students opportunities to find if there are other spaces in the workforce that they may be able to enter into. A goal of this superintendent is to make sure they walk into those spaces with credentials so they're ready to earn a living right away. Shout-out, anytime I get a chance to see the word algebra used in, in middle school students, Kanakamak students use algebra to track daily life, good article. If our students aren't using math, they're gonna be excluded from a large segment of the work that comes out in the future, no matter if it's hands-on work or whatever the case may be. One of our students, I don't know if you saw this, but please make sure you give congratulations to one of our junior high school students who earned a position in NJ PAC Fall Exhibit. I don't like messing up names, but I believe it's Messiah Pharoah. I think I said that correctly. Messiah's work has been selected to be showcased at NJ PAC. Again, talent is here. I know that was on Parent Square also. Am I saying Parent Square enough? Parent Square's gonna start giving us some royalties, we're gonna start getting some checks for that. Anytime you get a, uh, offer to go to college instantly, you know how much stress that takes off of our students? I was brought to my attention that some of our students went to a career fair, and forgive me for not remembering the college, but one of our students was instantly offered a scholarship to go to college the same day she went to the fair. Inside of our superintendent report, twelve seniors got instant offers to Montclair. Twelve seniors from our high school got instant offers to Montclair State University. So please make sure you continue to acknowledge the importance for our high school seniors that you should've already filled out applications. You should already have narrowed down your choices, but if you haven't, there's still time, but the joy of being able just to go through that process is a beautiful thing. Another shout-out and accolades to our student athletes today. Three of our students had a signing day today. Last week, we had one student, one of our students going to Iowa State Football Scholarship. Three of our students today, forgive me if I get it wrong, but Gary helped me out. We have NY, um, SUNY New Paltz, we have Fairleigh Dickinson, Fordham Campus, and Caldwell College. Those are our three students, three colleges where our students signed today. Volley, male volleyball, young ladies volleyball, and male track student. So shout-out and kudos to them. I'm coming and winding it down, you're probably saying he does a long report, stop talking, Superintendent Glover, but I'm just so excited about the things I wanna share. I wanna tee up the final part of this presentation I think is essential.
Superintendent Glover, I just wanted to say, just in the time that you've been here, you've seen what a broad spectrum of success these kids are experiencing. And it's not just in one particular areas, which, you know, warms my heart, having done this for so long, where you can have a financial report for nine years in a row where we're doing extremely well, even by the International Association of School Business Officials, to, last year was the eighth year of visual performing arts of one of the best communities in the country for music education. And then you turn the page and you see something else, and it's a testament, a testament to everyone that is on your staff and has been doing this, and I'm very proud to be part of this community. And just the mere fact that you, you saw it just immediately, all, it, it's just, it's wonderful.
Thank you, sir. So now we talk about how do we grow where we're at? I came into this position and I said that it's not about coming in here and tearing down, it's really about how do we build the next levels and the next floors to what we're doing already great? And so I'm moving with growth, innovation, and making database, database decisions. Five priority goals, and we'll put this out there, it's gonna live out there, this is, and I think it aligns to a strategic plan. I've been looking at our technology plan draft. I'm a believer in plans because it unifies and keeps us all on the same page, and we don't get off into different pathways. So I prioritize student success. Prioritizing student success, we could talk all night what that looks like, but you're gonna hear me frequently say, students first, but we also have to prioritize student success. The only metric is not a test score. It's essential to be part of the metrics, but it's not the only metric we will use to judge a student's preparedness to go on to post-secondary college and careers. Safe and secure learning environment, both mentally, physically, emotionally. All of us in this room who are over the age of eighteen have been in a school system at some point in time in our lives, and we know the challenges that we experienced when we were students. We're gonna continue to make sure we give our students that safe, secure learning environment, but we have to give them outlets to be able to learn how to manage being a pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school student. It's tough in today's society with social media and so many other variables in their life, and we don't know everyone's situation, and it looks different. But our goal is to put those guardrails around them so they can do the things of being a child. Failure's okay, because when you fail, you figure out how to make it better. We just can't let them fail too often. Third, we're gonna recruit, retain, and we're gonna develop great talent. Recruit, retain, and develop great talent. We do a pretty good job of recruiting, and based on the statistics that I've looked at already, we retain quite a few of our staff members. The area that I know we need to do better is developing consistently across the multiple resources that we have to offer, and I'm sure we're gonna do that. Operational excellence. I feel blessed to walk into a space where I have a good team. I've told my team already, I'm seeing the gaps that we need to just kinda close real quickly so that we can do these other things real fast. That's gonna make us even better and competitive. As I've told my team, I'm competitive. I do not like to be anything but in the top ten, really number one, but you don't just rush that process, you don't cheat the process of learning throughout the way. My expectation for our team is by the time my seat is done, multiple schools within our district will be in the top twenty in the state of New Jersey. Multiple school, our district will be in the top in the state, but regionally, because in Middlesex County, I kinda know who our competition is, that's a low bar. I'm actually going for those Bergen County schools and those Mercer County schools, right? And when people say, what did they do in Piscataway? We did something very intentional and very systemic, that's gonna be, be able to be sustained. And the last part is we're gonna develop partnerships. We are going to develop partnerships, and we're gonna challenge our partners to invest in our district. We know our budgetary challenges, but the workforce wants to make sure that we have students prepared to enter into it. The workforce is gonna have to come back to us and start putting some of those resources back in the comprehensive. I used to be in charge of, at the state level, of our county VOTEC schools. Great, great, great learning spaces, great learning spaces, but we have the talent just as much, and there's no reason our town should have to leave here to go outside to learn. So when we start becoming that innovation hub in Middlesex County, in Piscataway, the businesses will come to us. So that concludes one part of my report. The last part, I'm gonna turn over to our attorney, David Rubin, so that he can give our summary of HIB for this period of time that I just spoke about, same as vandal, violence, vandalism, the SSD report. And with that being said, I thank you for allowing me to serve as your superintendent. I love the fact of the energy that was given tonight, and as you can see, I'm ready to go, and let's get excited more, more about where we're going.
Well, thank you, Mr. Glover. You already have a preview of my semi-annual HIB report because some of the statistics were already contained in the SSDS report, it's a little bit of a crossover. But as you know, twice a year, I'm required to report on the numbers and the patterns of HIB that have been occurring during the last reporting period. You have in front of you a brief report that I prepared covering the same reporting period, January to June. During that period, there were forty-six reports of HIB, eleven substantiated HIBs. My job is to try to look for patterns as opposed to one-off incidents. Ms. Elgato Kowen pointed out that there is, in terms of numbers of both reports and substantiated findings, uh, the numbers traditionally tend to spike at the intermediate and middle school level generally. Some schools are higher than others. Ms. Elgato pointed out one would certainly be taken a look at, you know, whether that's actual incidents that are more in one school than another, or whether it's different ways of reporting and detecting HIB from one school to another is something we need to look at. The good news here is that we're not seeing real patterns of, you know, for example, what we look for is, you know, is there a pattern of racial discrimination occurring in one particular school? Is there a pattern of HIB occurring on one particular school bus that's coming in from one part of town? These are the things we look for. We're not seeing any of that, so that's the good news. I've been spending a little more time over the last year getting more involved with our school safety and, uh, school climate teams. I'm required to meet, I'm required to meet with our school anti-bullying specialist twice a year, which I do. Over the past year, I've also been making my business to attend as many of the school safety, school climate, and school, school safety, school climate committee meetings as I can. I've already attended several this year, and I'm pleased to report that each school does a little different, uh, but they're all in touch with what's going on and doing their best to make sure that, aside from all these investigations and findings, we prioritize the most important aspect of the statute, which is prevention. Uh, and as Mr. Glover said, it, school climate is where that starts. We, we measure success by whether it's not the adults saying we don't do that either, whether the kids are saying that. So with that, that concludes my report, and I yield the floor back to Mr. Glover.
Thank you, sir. Board members, if there's any question in regards to the superintendent report, Madam President, I'll yield it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Okay, next, we're going to go to personnel and labor relations. Ms. Nancy Elgato-Cowan.
Okay, thank you. Be resolved that the following motions identified as items AUE be approved as presented.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the one?
Dr. Conners?
Uh, yes.
Mr. King? Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Elgato-Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Committee reports. We had three committees that met this month for this meeting. I'm gonna start off with curriculum. The curriculum committee met on Monday, December the first, twenty twenty-five to discuss gifted and talented screening, artificial intelligence, literacy, family night and more. GOCAT screener was discussed by Dr. Baskerville. The district is screening all second graders to be included in LEAP, the gifted and talented program. All student groups are included in the screenings, which is a good indicator of students who will do well in gifted and talented programs so that no candidates are missed. Practical instructional applications of AI. Dr. Baskerville and Chris Aravando will discuss that. The district has an artificial intelligence policy but needs practical applications of what AI looks like in a classroom. The AI action plan and policy will help guide the work of the AI committee. Superintendent Earl Cynkelver highlighted the importance of careful movement in regards to AI. This may include piloting AI use within certain grade levels and course offerings along with resources for the teachers and administrators. Chris Aravando shared some of the work the district is doing to explore AI, including community partnerships as well as the difference between generative and adaptive AI. Ms. Aravando also shared a listing of existing programs, district programs with high AI usage and some use, current usage of AI from classrooms. Literacy Parents Engagement Night. Dr. Baskerville and Janine Albanese discussed this. The district is hosting the ELA Parent Engagement Night on December the sixteenth at six thirty. There will be sessions for grades K to five and grades six through eight. Representatives from McGraw-Hill will share several lessons and the science behind this year's change to the new literacy program. Parents attend both sessions if they have children at different grade levels. ELA Implement Update, Janine Albanese. The district is moving on to a benchmark that assesses end-of-grade skills for each student. This will take, be taken once more this year to indicate where students fall along the continuum of grade level expectations. October District Professional Development Day was discussed by Dr. Baskerville. The district's October twentieth Professional Development Day was an overwhelming success. Feedback was analyzed by the district and PTA who gave a comprehensive report. The district is taking feedback into consideration to craft PD for the spring. ESL bilingual program was discussed by Gonisha Gerard-Moran. The district has implemented a part-time bilingual program at Eisenhower and Arbor, offering language arts and math in Spanish. The district is assessing whether it should be expanded to Grandview. Students are thriving with a sense of belonging and growing in their self-efficiency. If there are twenty or more multilingual learners in a single language group district-wide, a bilingual program is required. The district is exploring dual language and emergence program in which students receive instructions in Spanish and English with the opportunity to become biliterally, bi-literal and bilingual. Data dialogue presentation was handled by Andrew Keigho. Andrew Keigho shared relevant research and goals about informed data dialogue that would increase accessibility, understanding and transformability of data among district stakeholders. The district's grades K to five staff were surveyed in themes, challenges, possible, possible solutions and next steps were shared. The goal is to continue educators and families through data-informed dialogue. Playwriting as a literacy gen world theater was handled by Scott Hood. The district is proposing a new full-year elective course for the high school. They would offer a deeper dive into plays, incorporate non-Western playwriting, analyze text structures, authentically choices and dramatic traditions. And if the course is approved, the curriculum would be written over the summer. Foundations of cyber security was handled by Frank Rubleys. The district is proposing a new full-year elective course for the grades nine through twelve about cybersecurity, encryptance, threats, et cetera. The school would offer students practical experience and access to computer science and corporate principles of AI. If the course is approved, the curriculum would be written over the summer as well. And that concludes my report for curriculum. Next, we'll have fiscal planning and operations by Dr. Conners.
The fiscal planning and operations committee met on this past Monday to discuss twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, audit the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget, facility capital projects and some other things. On the audit, you heard from our auditor tonight. The district had another successful year with no audit findings. Dave Gannon, who presented, he's from PF O'Connor Davies. He reviewed our annual comprehensive financial report summarizing the financial performance of the district and the reserve fund balance accounts. The district fully complied with the December fifth deadline for submission of the, that's the annual comprehensive financial report, that's the acronym, CFR. And Mr. Gannon presented tonight. Twenty twenty-six, twenty seven budget. The school and department budgets submissions were made on Friday, December fifth. Meetings will be scheduled over the next two months to review the budget submissions. Health benefit expenses were over budget in December twenty twenty-five, the fifth month in a row. The district will, is trending toward a significant increase for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget. Board will receive a budget preview briefing in January to discuss the revenue and expenditure challenges for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget. Up to high school, the Susan B. Anthony Gym. You recall, there was some water damage, flood. And we ended up getting insurance money and the wood floor new features were completely installed. Sanding, painting and staining of the floors ongoing. The gym floor is still expected to be available on the seventh fifteenth in time for the first basketball games. New flooring in the weight room was also completed. Superintendent Glover and I were up there today. I took a look in and, and it's funny just how things happen. If you can't find enough money to make improvements, but unfortunately, if you have prices, you get money through insurance. But it's, it looks fantastic. And facility capital projects. Piscataway High School interior alterations, the engineering classroom had wallpaper installed. The nurses suite is complete. The new cafeteria section received furniture and cabinetry. The opening of the space is pending a punch list review by the architect. The computer classroom will be ready to open January fifth, twenty twenty-six. Focus of the construction has shifted to the media center esports room. Furniture is scheduled to be installed over the winter break and grand opening is scheduled for mid-January. The only significant changes that remain are the glass doors for the cafeteria and media center because they require precise measurements when surrounding work is complete. Acoustical upgrades. Wall padding will be installed on the lower six feet of the walls. And this building, Fellowship Farms multipurpose room right over there, December seventeenth and the nineteenth. The contractor is working on final some of those items. Up to high school again, there's a, this is great, there's a new intercom, public announcement clock system. It almost looks like you're walking around an airport. You see these like, you know, these digital streams on these, with the clocks, it's great. And the alert functions of the intercom system can be retested and phone vendors are working on configuration, migration to the new phone system, integration of the new phone system into the intercom system. You know, I've been around for a long time and when buildings were separate, these were separate systems and you had to talk from one phone and the other phone just to connect the two buildings. And years later, here we are with these, with this beautiful intercom PA clock system. Solar panel installation and Cobbletown roof. Thirteen bids were received for the Cobbletown roof with the low bid coming in below budget. Contract award is included on the December eleventh. Board meeting agenda tonight. Bits for the solar panel installation at Piscataway School in Cobbletown will be opened the summer nineteenth with a contract awarded planned for tonight. Architects will appear on the December tenth planning board meeting, which was last night. We share our plans with the municipal planning board in case they have any comments. And bid opening is on January sixth, twenty twenty-six and the contract awards planned for January eighth, twenty twenty-six. Maintenance will construct a temporary wall in the multi-purpose room. And the sale, students, that's the, I think the students acquiring in will begin using the space on January fifth, twenty twenty-six. Food service update, an email was sent to inactive families with positive balances on Giving Tuesday, allowing them the opportunity to note they donate their funds to the district to help offset some families' negative balances. Two hundred and fifteen customers donating the balance totaling one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-three cents. Six customers transferred their balance to other students totaling fifty-seven twenty cents. And future emails are planned after graduation and every Giving Tuesday. New Jersey School Business Legislative Update. We're very fortunate that our business administrator through the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials happens to sit on the legislative committee of that entity. And I happen to sit on the New Jersey School Board Association, you know, executive committee. So between the two of us, during these meetings, we highlight anything that may affect our school system financially and what's going on. The first thing I want to report on, because this is really, this is, this is great news. This is really great news. I'm speaking now as an executive committee member of the New Jersey School Board Association. Happy to report that our head of our government relations department in the New Jersey School Boards Association has been named to Governor-elect Mickey Sherrill's Transition Committee Action Team on Education called Delivering a Strong Education for New Jersey Children. So what this means is that basically, you know, public schools, the New Jersey schools has a seat at the table during this transition to the new, to the, you know, to the new governor. And that's a great thing. And then we reviewed some, you know, we review any legislation that could, you know, affect us. And we highlighted one, which is called Senate three nine one five, which requires municipalities. And this is an issue across the state. What's happening is that as school districts look at their revenue sources to meet the upcoming budgets, a lot of municipalities throughout the state above their ratables that they can collect in property taxes. And that's where we get our share of the property taxes when we do our budget. Above that are these things known as payments in lieu of taxes, which are called pilots, which the municipality works out financial agreements with developers. And all across the state, what's been happening, and that's what is legislation's happening, is that school districts are left out of those communications. So if there's a development that could put children into a school district and it is done through a payments in lieu of taxes, that that, the municipality gets ninety-five percent of that money. It's as an annual service charge and the school district does not see any portion of that money. So President Sherry, in her time and here, was able to get involved in the legislative committee and the delegate assembly. And so six hundred school districts come together twice a year and pass resolutions to advocate our legislatures to do something about it. And this is a direct result of the six hundred school districts delegates coming together in an assembly saying to our legislatures, we, school districts, look at it. We want a portion of these payments in lieu of taxes. So it's fair to the communities and to the children that we serve. That's a biggie. And then the S five three ten and A five eight forty-six, the biggest discussion is always about the state school funding formula. And those are pieces of legislation which are trying to make better the current school funding formula that we have in place. And those are, those are being considered in the Senate, in the Assembly Education Committees. Business office update, something that we are proactive doing. You can see you heard the financial report, is that we actually have an investment account. So that money that would normally sit that we can invest, we have taken it through the New Jersey Association of Rebate, New Jersey ARM, which is an asset rebate management system, to invest some of that money to get a better return. And that money can then be used to offset a lot of these capital projects that you're, that we saw. And we're doing, we're doing, we're doing pretty good there. I think in the twenty-one million dollars that we've invested in the last couple of years, we've seen up to like a one point eight million dollars that we're able to use, you know, in that part of the budget. And thanks to, and I really, I mean, the business department is very proactive and you're doing a great job. The iPad sale, one of the three iPad lots were successfully sold. The other two lots did not meet their reserve price. The district will attempt to re-auction the iPads in spring. And then, you know, we talked about that increase in healthcare costs. And to be, again, proactive is that, you know, we have to provide for, you know, seventy-five percent of our budget goes to support, you know, our teaching staff. And what we want to do is make sure that everybody is well. So there's a wellness committee so we can have preventive, you know, measures so that, you know, do certain things. So, you know, try and keep healthy, keep healthy. And then, you know, recent was the volleyball game. That, that, that went over well, I heard, that went pretty good.
Very popular.
Very popular, yeah. Now, I guess people
They had a lot of fun.
And so, Madam President, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Conners. Culture, climate and community relations, Ms. Nancy Elgato-Cowan.
Okay. Culture, climate and community relations committee met on Thursday, November the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five to discuss positive messaging, community partnerships, wellness initiatives and more. Positive messaging, we often have Gary Miller at our meetings. He shared a presentation of all the monthly themes, the quotes that you see on the marquees. One of the things that the committee instituted last year was in addition to those quotes being on the marquees, we also put them up on our social media images. For the October, we reviewed the start of November. The October themes were Hindi, Hindu Heritage Month. And November was Giving Thanks and Gratitude. Upcoming displays will include Happy Holidays for now in December and Muslim Heritage Month and Martin Luther King Day in January. Community partnerships, Dr. Gray shared information about community partnerships. Junior Achievement, Dr. Gray accompanied a group of high school students from PHS Business Academy to the Business Hall of Fame Gala where students networked and businesses led, with business-led, business leaders. The president of Junior Achievement NJ and the president of NJIT. So they were able to hobnob with these executives. The students from the high school Future Educators Association Club, they actually already attended the day at Knollwood, teaching all the third grade classes about financial literacy as part of the Junior Achievement High School Heroes Program. And I just want to comment, I actually was able to attend that program. It was on December the fifth and it was excellent. It was very, very good. The students enjoyed it. Both the third grade classrooms as well as the high school students who are presenting, they all had a great day. There were forty eighth graders from each middle school that also will be attending the Junior Achievement Inspire Career Exploration on December the tenth and eleventh at Middlesex College. And all of these programs that we do these partnerships with are absolutely free to our district, which is really, really great that we get these opportunities for our students. And it's out of no cost to our district. So these are really great opportunities to help foster these programs for our students. Another partnership that we have is through Rutgers University, Rutgers Business School. Dean Charles Brown shared information to the juniors in the PHS Business Academy about college and summer pre-college programs on October the thirtieth. The What's Next Career Fair in the high school, college counseling department. They hosted the annual What's Next Career Fair on December the fourth. Representatives from a wide range of employment options would be visiting the high school to speak to juniors and seniors about jobs and learning opportunities that do not require college. And Jersey Cares on October the sixteenth, the Jersey Cares organization arranged for volunteers from PSENG to complete an outdoor classroom project for the Eisenhower School. Mr. Miller shared photos from the volunteering, from the volunteers working on. And they finished the project on that one day. It was really great. They had like an outdoor chalkboard. They had like, you know, places to sit and have a meal. to sit and have a meal, and it was very, very nice. Wellness Services, the, in our committee, we discussed the Haidman Family Nights that will usually start to take place in the new year, and the possibility of having a presentation from the Piscataway Community Outreach Commission at that event. The committee also discussed potential ways to better promote the Piscataway Community Outreach Commission that we had last year, the In Plain Sight Event, such as a teaser video, additional branding, more descriptive title, publicizing it on Parent Square, or messaging from each principal directly to their, to their school. And the committee also discussed having it during a different time of the year, and possibly at middle schools instead of the high school. Finally, we discussed the Community Garden, and we were, we will be revisiting discussions about Community Garden in the future, and the plans will be revisited for this week. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Approval of minutes, Mr. King?
Be resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted. Special meeting, November first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
I have to abstain, I wasn't at.
Thank you, Dr. Connors, so noted. The next one.
Oh. Business meeting, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Executive session, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain, that one's wrong.
Okay, public comments from the floor. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on the educational issues and school matters of the community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comments at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The Board may require that individuals register to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. Participants may submit written materials in support of their position. All statements and or questions shall be directed to the Presiding Officer, and no participant may address or question Board members individually. All speakers are required to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect of dignity and privacy rights of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it's not the Board's intention to stifle comments on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others, under the law governing defamation and or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the Board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Is there anyone in the public area, please come forward, how are you doing this evening?
Getting over here.
I'm good, I'm good. And state your name and your address.
My name is Jeremy Patel, address one fifty-three Denali Avenue, Piscataway. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Glenn Smith for your services. We thank you for your service. Now, want to start with my question. Thank you, Ms. Nancy Sagato, for bringing up the safety concerns. I was here for the last meeting when this report was presented, and I am aware that the Arbor numbers were still high, and I'm still concerned.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask the same question that I asked last time, as what are we doing about it? I heard a lot of requirements, requirements, requirements. It almost like we have to. Requirement is like we have to, but if we want to, then we need to. We have to start saying we need to do something, not we are required to. Last time I asked the same question about how are we informing parents? Lot of times, school, students' behaviors happening, what is happening at school, it's not happening at school. It may be family situation, whatever else is happening outside, or their friends local. We need to do something where parents are aware of resources available out there. And I had a child in Arbor a couple of years ago, and I have one right now, so I'm really concerned about student's safety. And information, how we get to parent, it, it's not easy to get. So there is something, some work to be done, and I kindly request Board to look into see what the Counseling Department can provide, express the information to parents of, there are free resources available at Piscataway High School for counseling, which a lot of parents may not know about it. They're, they're open till late, they, they have late hours, they're, they're open till seven, eight o'clock.
That's even, yeah.
Yeah. And I know this from my personal experience, as when I requested, I did not get it, I went to public library and I found the information, and so this is something that we can, we need to do something about it, because we cannot be reporting the numbers, higher numbers, and keep saying that we need to investigate. We are at the state where something needs to be done. And it's just my simple request, is I am, as a parent, really concerned about my child going to the school where there are high safety concerns.
Does that sound what?
High safety concerns. If no one else wants to speak, I have another question.
Go for it.
Okay. This was from one of the parents who I was talking to, why do we sell energy drinks at school? I, I was not aware that there.
In the high school?
I don't know, the parents didn't tell me, but it was told that our energy drinks sold at school, so we, we should. Yes. Now I have another question.
Yes?
Sorry.
I have another question, yeah. We, we have a lot of topics, and every meeting, we talk about everything but special education programs. I would like to hear and see some more topics of special education programs and students and, and the educators, what do they need help with, what kind of concerns we have in, in, in the district, and what needs to be done. This, one of the area I'm not seeing in my coming, a lot of meetings, so that's something I request that Board look into it and see if we can include some special education.
There are having monthly special education meetings once a month, and it's held here.
So that was my next question. So that's the parents' support group meetings that's supposed to be happening. I came to one of them, but there's no communication. When I asked last time, I was told that the case manager should be communicating, there hasn't been any communication that we've been receiving. I have Parent Square, so I checked, but there's nothing on Parent Square about anything, any, any meetings that is happening, that is monthly meeting happening for parents' support group or, or any upcoming additional meetings.
Okay, so we're gonna take those in interest, and those questions, we'll write them down, I guess we'll try to get back to you on some of these matters.
Yeah, 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 I'm not asking for answer right now, I'm, I'm just saying that I came to one of the meeting, but after that, I haven't been able to keep up, because I don't know when the meetings are happening, and then when I ask, I was told at the case manager.
Can, can I ask that you email your questions to my office, my attention and to my secretary, and we'll make sure that we get your feedback on those questions?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to rush the judgment and make a wrong statement, but I also want you to get the right information, and so we can make sure we make the adjustments.
Sure.
Thank you.
Regarding the Parent Square, again, we just had a Curriculum Committee meeting this week, and also we just recently heard that there is a parent engagement meeting coming up on December.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth. How are we communicating to parents, and has there been a communication gone out?
Yes, in the Parent Square.
On the Parent Square?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's, I think, something that would be very beneficial for parents, it's a new ELOA program this year, that with my, my personal experience, meeting with parent, teachers at the Teachers, Parents Teachers Conference, they're also trying to get adjusted to the program, students are trying to get adjusted to the new learning and stuff, so this meeting will be really helpful for parents, and I don't know if the educators are also invited to come and join, but that's something that they can, it will be helpful. My last question. How do case managers stay up to date with special education requirement? And this is based on my personal experience. I know what I, what, what is required, and what I can request. Recently, I requested articulation meeting, and I was told I don't need to have one, but I can request one, I know that.
So here's what we're gonna do, all your questions, we're gonna email them to Superintendent Glover, Secretary, and at which point in time he will receive it, and he will address it, and then he in return will send you back the information you're looking for.
I just want to, want to bring the concerns, because I do my, do religions.
Oh, no, no. We have one-on-one, we both know each other.
And I do what I need to do for my children.
Exactly.
But not every parent's have ability and resources and the energy and the time to do what they need to do. As we already have resources available, they're out there, it's just we need to be informed, and how can we make it easier for each other?
Right.
It's just communicating. Either we are communicating on Parent Square, or making a standard practice of case manager checking in once in a while, just having a simple automated email going out to, to parents once a month, saying that, oh, this is just the automated email checking in, if you're, if you have concern, you can respond back. If nothing, then nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in the public section? If not, can, come forward.
Hey, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members. Miss Smith, thank you so much for your service, six years, it's a long, long time, thank you for everything. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Piscataway Township Education Association, which represents dedicated teachers and educational professionals throughout our district. First and foremost, I want to extend a warm welcome to Mr. Ursula Glover as our new Superintendent, and we are genuinely excited to have you to join the Piscataway family, and we look forward to working alongside you as we continue our shared mission of providing an exceptional education for every student in our community. Mr. Glover, we recognize that you're stepping into a district with its own unique strengths, challenges, and opportunities. We want you to know that PTEA is ready and eager to be a constructive partner as you navigate your new role. We believe in transparent dialogue, mutual respect, and working together to address whatever comes our way. So, welcome, Mr. Glover, we're here to support you, we're proud to serve this community, and very excited for the journey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Being I see no one else standing up during public comments, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other comments is closed. Fiscal Planner and Operations, Dr. Connors?
Be resolved, following motions identifies items A through K, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mrs. Sagato-Cowen?
I'm just making sure there's nothing that I was on there, okay, yes. But I do also want to make one comment, that, you know, there was some discussion in the Board about some of the, some of the items here, just so that the, just so the, the community knows, yes, you may see that Board members are here saying yes to certain agenda items, like here was like A through K. These things are gone through with a fine-tooth comb in committee meetings, in, you know, executive board meetings, and certain other questions along the road. So just because we may be here at the moment saying yes to, you know, certain things on this agenda, does not mean that it was not questioned along the way. There were certain things in this particular finance piece that were questioned, and they were satisfied to the Board members here, and so that's why we are voting yes. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Glover.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carr?
We have nothing on the policy curriculum, Mr. Patel?
Be resolved that following motions identified as item A can be, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sagato-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes. Public Services, Dr. Nelson?
Be it resolved that the following motions identified as items A and B be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sagato-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carr?
Administrative and Auxiliary, Mr. Patel?
Be resolved that following motions identified as A through C be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sagato-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carr?
Old Business?
I believe this might be under the heading of Old Business, if I'm wrong, correct me. We will be having a transition meeting, did I mention that before? Madam President?
It's going beyond the new.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Connors, anything?
Well, no, I mean, the, the, it's, it's related to this, is that.
I will retract.
So that people know that as a governance body, we want to train ourselves in all aspects of good governance, and the New Jersey School Boards, who we pay dues to, offer services to go through different categories and then give, give you a certification. Our Board is Board Certified through the New Jersey School Boards Board Member Academy, and we did that last year, but we can keep going, and that's what we're planning to do, and you get in, you know, you get a credit for every hour you do it, and you pick a topic. We're at the point where, and we give ten more credits by next November of two thousand and twenty-six, we're getting credit for the various things, like that Vice President talked about, Nancy was talking about, where when we have, you know, another special meeting about the transition and so on, it'll count towards our Master Board Certification, which we only need about, we need five and a half credits by next November. But it's in the spirit of continuous improvement, and, and so we'll be continuing that with the next session that the Nancy Sagato-Cowen mentioned.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. New Business?
Okay, New Business. We will be having a, a transition meeting to welcome our Superintendent Glover, as well as, you know, retreat with our newest Board Member, that'll be starting in January, and we will be coming up with that date, will be in February, where our New Jersey School Board Representative, Mary Ann, will be coming out. Don't have the firm date as of yet, but at our next meeting, I will get that to you.
That's it? Okay. Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Madam President, just had a couple of quick things, and that is that in our packets, it was the upcoming winter schedules for our sports. And you always get the Chief Senior Nights, and I just always recommend everybody, you know, these, these are the.
know, these, these are the athletes in our community that are finally seniors in their sports. And if you can make the senior night as a board member, it means a lot to the parents and to the, and to the community. So you got that schedule. The second thing is that you look over there, and it says twenty twenty-five board goals, and that I would just challenge the board members to start thinking about twenty twenty-six, January, usually monthly, set our, you know, our goals, think about those. And then just the last thing is that, you know, I've had the, I've been fortunate to be the Piscataway School District's delegate to the New Jersey School Board's delegate assembly that I was talking about with the resolutions. And, and, and one of the latest resolutions that passed, I don't do a formal report, but I'm just, you know, and I know Vice President Sarah, I was going, and Prashant Patel attended, but something that we've done here in this district that actually is ahead of the curve is that back in November of two thousand and eighteen, we as a body passed a resolution about no child should go hungry. And what it ends up happening is that we have built up a little bit of a school debt, and, and we talked about it. But that's, that's, that's what we believe in. And so we believe in that, and so does all of, a lot of other districts across the state because one of the resolutions that just passed was, they put into the, our policy manual to advocate for universal, you know, free lunch and free breakfast for all the districts in the state, whether it's paid by federal government or whether it's paid for by the state. But I think that, in my opinion, this is Dr. Tom Connor speaking, that, you know, children don't learn if they're, if they're hungry. And there's no reason why children shouldn't, should, should not, if they're food insecure, get access to food one way or the other, no matter how much it costs. And that's my own opinion, and evidently, by the majority of eighty to twenty percent, it's, it's the opinion of all school districts of the state. So I just wanted to, that was my report from the delegate side.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. Have a motion for adjournment?
Okay.
I guess?
Second.
All in favor? You are adjourned.